Chris, it's 6:30 and I'm seeing for elementary Cheryl Charles, Lynn Morgan, Jessa West Clark. For Rockingham, I'm seeing Jason Terry and Priscilla. For the high school, so far, I believe I saw Molly in the room. Am I correct? And George Smith is here. So we have three members from the elementary, three members from Rock, two members from the high school at this point. Am I missing anyone?
It's like Jason Benson's here too, David.
Okay, I have, I have Jason on my list of others.
And I'm here.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Brenda. All right. Okay. Besides Jason, are there any non-voting members here tonight? Jack Brier.
David, am I a voting member tonight?
I would like you to be a voting member tonight because Deb has a board of abatement meeting and she will be showing up late. I did email her about that and she expressed no objection to having you vote her proxy. I expect that to be here when she can get here.
Thank you.
Okay, 6:32. It's Wednesday, October 14th, and this is a Zoom meeting of the Wyndham Northeast Supervised Reunion Board. And the WNESU Board will come to order. Adjustments to the agenda, Superintendent Pratt.
I have none.
Okay, are there other adjustments, anyone? Okay, a small adjustment, and that is under reports. Five A5, which is business office reorganization. Flora, I believe, has her staff here tonight. And I would like to make, have staff members make brief introductions before we get down to communication and public comment. So Flora, if you're ready, I would like to turn it over to you to show us who we have and let them tell us a little bit about what they do.
Okay, so I guess I'll start with our newbie, Marlene.
Are you here, Marlene? If you're here, Marlene, just tell us a little bit about what your responsibilities are. And I can't count that high because I only have 10 fingers. How long you been working in the office?
This is my 18th year as accounts payable specialist. And pretty much all I do is pay bills for all the schools and I process professional development. And that's about it, but it's a lot.
I see your warrants constantly, Marlene.
Pardon?
I said, I see your warrants constantly. It's a big job.
Yes, it is.
And I'm quite certain that your boards and your superintendent and your business manager greatly appreciate your work. Who's next, Flora?
I have Jason Bishop. He is one of our new employees. He is on payroll.
Tell us about payroll, Jason.
Well, basically, I'm working with Shawna right now, just learning the ropes, start to finish, and just trying to get things done as accurately and as timely as possible, basically.
Well, that's great. Any relevant previous experience you'd like to share with us?
I've had a couple of different jobs, not necessarily in payroll specifically, but I've got a lot of different experience, working a few temporary accounting jobs right when I got out of school. And then most recently, I was working at a asphalt testing supplier, doing some AP, a little bit of collections, and kind of just basically wearing whatever hat they needed me to, so.
Well, thank you for taking the job. Payroll is obviously extremely important to us and timely and accurate. Payroll is what keeps a lot of people who work for us happy. I think they're happy anyway, but it certainly enhances their enjoyment of the job when they get paid timely. So, thank you. Who else we got, Flora?
So we have Shawna, who is our new senior accountant, and she used to do payroll for us. So she's the one that is training Jason right now.
Shawna, can you tell us a little bit about what your previous responsibilities have been and what you're doing now? And gosh, you've been in the district for several years now yourself, haven't you?
Yep, I've been here for maybe like a little over four years. I was doing a lot of food service accounting and special education accounting. I'm still doing food service accounting. That had not gone away. But now additionally, in addition to training Jason, I am working with Flora on getting e-finance updated and the cash flows in there, all the banking info. Keeping track of all of that.
Well, thanks. It's important work, and I think we all know that. Flora, who's next?
So we have Jo Ellen. She is our human resources specialist.
Hi, Jo Ellen, wherever you are.
Hey there, how are you? I'm up here.
Great. Is that the same office you were in before or is that a different office?
Right. Doesn't it look great, David?
I don't know.
We've got new desks and we were able to take a little bit of time at night to reconfigure everything and just make it a little bit more pleasant to be in. So the offices, if you get a chance, you've got to come up. They look phenomenal. We feel so great in them now.
Good. And Jo Ellen, if you would, just remind us again what your current responsibilities are.
I started in January 13th, and I'm doing HR and benefits. I was doing some of the payroll reporting and I'm working on training Jason, and we'll be moving that as well over there so that everything is timely. But I'm onboarding people, working with offboarding people. We've got some big changes with our benefits coming up because of the VIHI changes coming. So I'm working on the new enrollments and all kinds of fun stuff.
Unwind an acronym for me, would you, Jo Ellen? VIHI.
VIHI, Vermont Employment Health Initiative.
Okay, thank you. And am I correct, Jo Ellen, that that is actually a collaboration between the boards and the teachers' associations?
I believe there is a collaboration with that.
Okay. Well, thank you, Jo Ellen, and good luck with your new responsibilities. And thank you for being diligent with your old responsibilities.
Thank you.
Flora, who's up now?
And the last one, and most important one, we have Frank Biddy. He is our new accounting clerk.
Hi, Frank.
Hello.
Tell us about your responsibilities, would you please?
Sure. So, so far this first week, I've been learning the ropes of e-finance plus. Been reviewing the information on there, making sure it matches our records, updating information as needed. The first big project I was working on was with Jo Ellen. We were doing an audit of the benefits for this past year, seeing who, if anyone, over or underpaid. And eventually, I'll be helping Jason with timesheets.
Great. That's great. Well, thank you so much for joining up. I think Flora is a pretty good judge of talent. I know that Chris Bryant is because he hired her. And I wish you all of luck with your responsibilities going forward. I have actually had a few pieces of your work output show up in my inbox over the last few days, so I know you're working. Flora, thanks for introducing your staff. Everyone is welcome to hang for as long as they can stand it at this meeting, but I thought it was important that both board members, as well as our public, had an opportunity to see who's doing the work up there on the second floor at 25 Cherry Street. And we will, of course, come back later in the meeting and discuss the business office reorganization and the steps that you've taken to improve the workflow. So once again, thanks to all of your staff and you as well, Flora, but if you would be so kind, stick around, Flora.
Thank you.
That brings us down to communication and public comment. Chris, do we have any communication and/or public comment tonight?
I don't see any as of yet, but let me turn it on. Lynn, Dr. Carey is monitoring the chat, so she'll keep an eye on that. And if anything comes up, she'll let us know.
Okay. I'm sorry, I missed that.
There's nothing in the chat right now. Thanks.
All right. Let us then Yes, Priscilla.
David, point of order. If there's nothing, then that's to be turned off because we voted that it would be off after the public communication. So it needs to be turned off until we get to questions.
I believe that my colleague from Rockingham is correct based on the motion we've had.
Public chat is not turned on. It's only to Chris and Lynn, Priscilla. That's how it's been since the start.
But that's not, no, that we did not vote to do that because that is violation. Because then you have information going to just certain areas. You don't have it coming to the board.
All right. With the board's acquiescence, I would like to move down to item four, which is to approve the minutes of September 30. I'd like to have a motion on those minutes, please.
Make a motion that we accept them as written.
Okay, thank you, Lynn. And do I have a second? I have a second from Cheryl. I presume everyone's had an opportunity to have a look at the minutes. Are there any corrections? I hear none. In that case, I'm going to roll call the board and Cheryl Charles.
I approve the minutes.
Thank you. Lynn?
Approved.
Thank you. Jessa?
Yes.
Thank you. George?
Yes.
Priscilla?
Yes.
Jason Terry?
Aye.
Thank you. Molly, how do you vote?
Yes.
All right, Brenda?
Yes.
Okay, you've approved the minutes of September 30. Reports, superintendent and assistant superintendent. Chris, I think this is your moment to shine.
All right. Well, good evening, everyone. I'm going to jump right into it. I did share with you, I don't know if you call it an update or my notes for tonight's meeting, but I'm going to kind of brush through some of the more broad stuff that I feel the public should know about as well. So the first thing I want to discuss is the board is asked to report out on new enrollment by schools. So currently have now, we have Bellas Falls Union High School has a, the new enrollment is up to 11 students. The middle school is up to eight. Westminster has 15 new students. Athens Grafton has eight. Saxons River with nine. Central Elementary with 17, and Pre-K will have 11 new students. So we're up to about a total of 71 new enrollments throughout Wyndham Northeast. You know, I'm, you know, off the top of my head, or right now, I couldn't tell you what those reasonings are for them, the new enrollments. I'm sure COVID has something to do with it. But we do have 71 new students who are with us or will be joining us shortly. Moving on to transportation.
Good news, Chris. That's good news.
Yes, I think it's very good news. We'll take 71 students anytime. Like I said, I wish I could share with you the actual reasons why, but I'm sure they're various on what they are. So I'm going to move on to transportation. Right now, we're operating 11 buses out of the 18 that we have. Students have all been given assigned seats, so we have assigned seats to any students who are currently riding the bus. Buses are continued to be cleaned after each run in the morning and in the end of the day at the afternoon before the next day. Currently, right now, we're having all the cameras inspected on the buses and making sure that they're working properly. So we're working on that and we'll continue to work on that because one of the things that we want to make sure is that, God forbid, we ever have any sort of COVID case, that the cameras will help us identify who was on the buses, you know, just like it's important to have all the cameras working in the school. So we are making sure all the cameras are up and running. Some of the bus routes today have been updated based on things, based on I think someone has their mic on, based on a number of things. We're only running 11 buses. So right now, the most recent change was we have the Pine Banks and West West Run has been consolidated. The West Run and the Gageville will now run together. The bus routes will continue to be adjusted in order to make sure that we all, the students, are transpired to where they need to go and as timely and as safely as possible. Late runs for Grafton and Westminster will begin in a few weeks. So, you know, kids who need to stay after, you know, as the after-school activities get underway, we make sure we have the transportation home for that. So I gave you a list of them. I'm not going to go through all the cleaning procedures that, for each school, as the board requested. You have that in writing, so you can take a look at it. As you can see, is that each school, all the schools, have a very detailed cleaning schedule and procedures that they continue to follow to make sure that the schools are being properly sanitized and cleaned. They are being cleaned on a regular basis, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. And they're having a really extra good cleaning on the Wednesdays where school is not in session. Because if you recall, that was the purpose of not having kids in the building on Wednesday so we could give it a thorough cleaning. And as the board can see from the detailed cleaning schedules and everything I gave you, they are definitely on top of that, and it's something that we continue to take very seriously, not just in the schools, but in all the transportation as well.
Thank you, Chris. Before we get to the business office reorganization, I would like to ask you if we can get some of this information up on a public portal because I think that there are members of, I think there are members of this community would be very interested in what those cleaning protocols are. And some of them I noticed were quite detailed, and I would like to compliment all of the principals for paying close attention to that. I think that the enrollment trends, as well as staffing trends, are probably also interesting topics for some members of our community. So I'm hopeful that we can increase the flow of information to the public because one of the ways I believe that you build public support is making sure that your public is well-informed of what the schools are doing and what their tax dollars are buying. And I think we give pretty good value in Wyndham Northeast. So we'd like to be able to document that as closely as we can. You're, back to you, Chris. And I want to just stop. I do have a hand from Priscilla. So we're thinking alike tonight, Priscilla, because I was about to ask if there were questions before we got to the business office discussion. Priscilla Lambert, you are recognized.
Sorry. I have a question. You covered the enrollment changes, but with the, going to the well, you're only going to four days a week, but trying to go to the four days. Can you tell us if there's an impact on that? And can you also tell us what impact the governors and the Secretary of French or whoever opened it up, that now the sixth grade is included in the same protocols as K through, K through five was? So it's now been extended to K through six? So are we looking at possibly getting our sixth graders in there at the same time as our fifth graders when we do that with the middle school?
Yeah, we continue, you know, all the sixth graders throughout the SU, whether it's, we continue to look at, you know, all the sixth graders coming back in throughout the SU. As far as the middle school, that's something we're still working on with the sixth graders in space-wise. But we're going to continue to work on it until we can figure a way to try to get the sixth graders back at the middle school as well. Because what we really want, if we have all the schools coming back, all those schools outside of the middle school coming back, and sixth grade is a part of that, we certainly want to do our best to make sure that we're meeting the four days a week for the middle school as well. But that's something I'll continue to work on with Mrs. Bukowski at the middle school. So, yeah, we, you know, anything that we've, updates from the governor and stuff and increasing the three feet to six feet, we're trying to work with as we get the information. In regards to the new enrollment, you know, it doesn't really impact because we're trying to plan on, the principals are aware of the increases that they have. They provided with me these numbers to doing the best we can to make sure that we have rooms in the classroom for the additional students. You know, some of the issues that, you know, we're seeing is that if we take out the teacher's desk, space-wise, we're able to put additional two desks in the classroom. So we're trying to utilize every aspect and space of the room as we can to get people back in there. So as they continue to loosen up the social distancing, we're, you know, we're happy about that. And it has given us options to get kids more in the school. So like I said, right now, all the sixth graders throughout the SU, there's a plan for them to return. We don't have anything solid in plan right now for the sixth graders, but hopefully shortly, we will be able to have that include the sixth grade for the middle school.
Follow up, Priscilla?
Can I follow up? Yes. And does that with the lower things for the fifth and sixth, does that open up for space-wise for thinking about the seventh and eighth grades as well? Because with them, with lower requirements, seems that that would allow more space to be used for your seventh and eighth graders. And the second question on this is how are we coming with a teacher for Central?
We haven't really got down to the seventh and eighth grade yet. We're trying to take it one step at a time. I think no matter, you know, how much we look at it, until they release all the the social distancing, whether it's three feet or six feet, it's going to be really difficult to get everyone into the Bellas Falls Middle School, seventh, fifth through eighth grade. But it is something we'll continue to work with to see, you know, how that develops. But right now, I can say we haven't looked at the seventh and eighth graders. We're, right now, our next step is to focus on the sixth graders. For the central school, I think there's been, there's some candidates there and they've been interviewing. So I couldn't tell you right now. Right now, I know we haven't technically hired anyone, but I believe that Principal Kennedy is in the process of interviewing or just finished the process of interviewing. But we did, we did have a few, I just don't know how they panned out.
Okay, Chris, I would like to take a comment from Lynn Carey.
I'm sorry, Chris. I'm sorry. But yeah, we actually did offer the job to a candidate and we are in the process of, the beginning process of presenting her to Chris to get it approved, finding fingerprints from where she's currently had been working part-time in a preschool. And so we're excited because that's really going to help out with having two third grades at Central. Fourth grade is also going to become a sticking point. But we're hopeful for fourth grade, and right now, we're okay in fourth grade. So this is a big plus for Central. Thank you.
Thanks, Lynn. Chris, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Why don't you go continue, please? Okay, and in that case, I'm going to just check in and see if either Mr. Brier or Mr. Benson have any questions so far? And
None so far.
Okay. Jason Benson? Good. Okay, Jason Terry, I do see your hand.
Thank you, David. Under the agenda items, there's a number two under A, update on quarantine staff by schools. I was hoping Mr. Pratt could review that.
Yes, I can jump into that now if people would like.
We're ready, Chris.
So going over, currently right now, we have, as of today, we have no employees that are self-quarantined through travel or symptoms. In the past, we did have, we did have a few. We had Saxons River did not have any in the past, travel or symptoms quarantined. Athens Grafton did not have any. Westminster did not have any. Central had one travel quarantine. Like I said, this isn't a pass that I'm talking about right now. And they had two that were out with possible symptoms. None of the, none of them came back as positive. So we have no cases of COVID. We're just looking at being extra cautious in regards to any symptoms that may appear that we're doing our due diligence and having people stay home and get tested. And we're taking the directives from the nurses. The middle school in the past had three for travel and had six for symptoms. And so right now, as a total in the past, we've had four travel quarantines and eight symptom quarantines. Like I said, no one's come back with COVID. They've all been negative. And the way we're doing this is that we have the online forms that all employees fill out, and we're really relying on the school nurses to make those decisions. And the employees reach out to the nurses and ask them what the next steps are. And so what we have come up with is that the Vermont Health Department has advised nurses not to treat staff illnesses the same as pediatric clients, meaning we don't follow the same pediatric algorithm. If a staff member is out ill with symptoms that could be COVID, we are to refer them to their own physicians. Their physicians will determine if COVID testing is necessary due to HIPAA. We cannot require written documentation of COVID testing or for medical diagnosis. We can ask, though, for a physician's note that states they are under care of physician. The physician should indicate when it is safe for the, health-wise, for that staff member to return to work. And these are the guidelines that WNESU nurses are following for staff members and the school community. So that's the update I have on COVID quarantines that we currently have. We don't have, currently, we don't have any, but we have had in the past. And like I said, we're following the lead from the medical professionals such as our nurses. And some of these, you know, looking into it, some of these quarantines that we have, they could have exhibited, you know, flu or cold-like symptoms, coughs or throat. So we're erring on the side of the caution, and they stay home and they reach out to the pediatrician and with the guidance from our school nurses. So we're really trying to be hypersensitive in regards to what we're seeing.
Thank you, Chris. Related question. How are we doing on substitute teachers? That's been kind of tough lately, hasn't it?
Yeah. Yeah, we're, you know, we're doing the best we can, but it's just like any other school out there right now. It's really tough finding substitutes. So, yeah, it's not, it's not a bright spot in regards to, if we have teachers go down, we have to, do have to quarantine. We probably, at this point, with the very few substitutes that we have, would have to rely on them teaching from home with their students and their classes. So it's not, it's not a positive thing. We don't have a large pool of substitutes that we can pull from this year.
I think in the very near future, possibly the regular meeting this month, Chris, the SU Board may want to reexamine what the incentives are for substitute teachers. Certainly, it's a seller's market now. Anything else, Chris, before we move into the business office reorganization?
David, I had a follow-up.
Oh, yeah, sure. Go ahead, Jason.
Chris, thank you for that. I know that, before you know it, Thanksgiving is going to be right upon us. And I could have swore I read something about holiday travel and things like that. Is there a plan in place to maybe coach the teachers? That's maybe not a great idea to travel in other restricted areas. I could have swore I saw something from Dan French or something like that. I was just wondering if you could elaborate.
Yeah. So so on Friday, I'll be sending out a memo giving employees guidance and what they should so on Friday, I'll be sending out a memo giving employees guidance and what they should if they're traveling. What they should know, what they should do, and the impact that it could have on the classrooms if they do end up traveling to a red or yellow, orange state. So that that guidance is going to come out on on Friday and sent out to all employees. And in and hopefully we'll all be making good decisions in regards to traveling. You know, we also have to take into consideration, we've already done this and started thinking about that is anytime that we're on a a school recess where there's Thanksgiving or Christmas. We really don't know how many people are essentially going to be traveling outside of state into these different areas. And so we really need to be prepared for what that's going to look like and err on the side of caution. So I'll continue to work my administrative team and pick away at a plan for following up after vacation time when we know people are traveling and may not necessarily indulge that information.
Hey, thank you, Chris. I think it'd be
Jessa has her hand up.
Oh, do you have a hand up, Jessa? Like, go right ahead, please. And then I'll recognize Priscilla. Jessa, I think you're muted.
I am muted, sorry. Regarding hands up, are we using the raise hand function in the participant list? Are you only looking at video hands?
I was actually looking for participant hands when Jason pointed out that you had a hand up.
I had put it down at that point. My first question was going back to the first issue where I raised my hand. Chris, do we have a data retention policy for the bus cameras?
Um, they usually, the bus cameras usually run a loop and I think every 24 hours they they loop over themselves. But yeah, yeah, that's that's currently what the cameras are at.
Okay, and then one, plenty of employers, healthcare facilities and schools included, including schools with NEA unions have no problem getting around the HIPAA requirements to require negative Corona tests. So I'm wondering if we can look more into that. And then the governor's health order for travel includes exceptions for essential travel, which include things like work, food shopping, medical appointments. So anybody who ends up in quarantine because of travel to red or yellow state is doing discretionary travel, knowing that they're violating the travel order. And have we thought about doing any kind of bargaining? Or what are you going to do for Thanksgiving if people knowingly violate the travel order and then come back and ask for paid time off for quarantine time?
Well, right now, all we can do is we're currently following the the state in the CDC rule, you know, guidance in regards to traveling and even the additional, so they have to use their any sick time, personal time or vacation time they have before they can even apply for, you know, a portion of their pay beyond that. So right now, all we can do is follow what the guidance has come out from the CDC and the state and we're sticking.
But the people that ended up in quarantine for discretionary travel were not following the guidance.
Yeah, I mean, right now, the looking at what they're, we're telling us, I mean, right now, we have it that we can't control that they travel to school. And if they're going to travel for leisure and they have to go into quarantine, what it says, and I'm sure you're aware of this, Jessa, is that you know, they need to tap into any personal sick leave and everything time after that. They have the other, you know, the COVID family medical kind of piece that they can get a portion of their pay that they they would get up to a certain amount. So that's the tough part. We don't have any really way to control. If they do decide to go away on a holiday and coming back, that's why we really need to as an administration, we're really looking at what that looks like the week, the week after people return, because we're going to have to err on this caution, because people are going to travel and we might not even necessarily know about it.
Thank you for that. And I'm about to recognize Priscilla, but I do want to point out, I believe that in the information you sent out to board members yesterday, there was the state's guidance on that as as part of your packet of documents. Do I recall that correctly, Chris?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you. Priscilla, you had a hand up.
In the past, although not an ideal solution or an ideal thing that we want to do, but pairs have been used to cover those classes when as substitutes. And that was part of the contract, it was right in the contract that they could, you know, their pay, because it talks about their pay in their contract when they are utilized as substitutes. So I think before we would think about closing the schools or something, we certainly should be using them. I know that doesn't allow for all of the special ed supports that they would be getting, but if they were out of school, those kids would not be getting the special ed supports that they would be getting either if they were remote. So it would be much be be much better to use the pairs in a substitute situation than to close down the schools, in my opinion.
Hey, thank you, Priscilla. I'm going to recognize Andy, who I think has some comment on that. Andy?
Thank you, David. While while Priscilla, I understand that that's part of the CBA. I think that you well know that we cannot violate IEPs and underserve kids just because it's convenient for the school. So I would caution that we take an approach where we're taking services away from students. While I believe all students have a right to learn, I don't want to put the district or the SU in any situation where we are looking at having to spend money for compensatory services because we did not provide services for students so that we could keep school open.
Response?
Let me comment, let me comment back because Andy, if you do not have substitutes and you have to close it, then those kids are not getting their services anyway. So you would be much better having them in the classroom with the para helping out and giving them as much service as you possibly could. And in a COVID situation, we have to look at that. And that's why I said that it is in there that they could be utilized. And I said, it's not ideal and I wouldn't want to do it. But if that's our only alternative, I think we do need to consider it.
I I respect that opinion, but it is a violation of FERPA or of FAP, which is Free and Appropriate Education for those students. And so I would caution very strongly that we not go down that road.
Thank you, Andy. Any additional discussion here before we move on to business office reorganization? Lynn Oregon?
I remember at when we were first talking about the opening up the schools, all the substitute teachers were going to be just used. People that were already in the school. So are we now bringing outside subs in? Is that the way it's working? Did that make sense?
Lynn?
Yes.
The all the school I know that has a regular sub coming in is Central School. So they have a sub that comes in almost daily to help and to to serve the, we've had a few you know, absences. And so that's the only school I know. I don't know if the high school might. But I do not believe any of the other elementary schools have have subs on, you know, a sub on call like that.
Lynn, is that an adequate answer for you?
Well, it just seems like different information, excuse me, different information that was given out at the very beginning where it said we weren't bringing subs in. They were going to try and do all the sub in-house, which I didn't quite see how they would do it. But it sounds like they've had to bring them in now rather than in-house.
Yeah, we're at the point where we do need to bring people in, but we we bring them through the the checks and the health checks to make sure that before they even come in that we're in a safe place with having them enter the building. So we did have to adjust that.
All right, anything else on on this topic? Lynn?
David, David, this is, this is Cheryl. I've got my hand up if I can make a quick comment. Thank you. The I just a comment in general, the spirit of this discussion is really focused on the health and wellbeing and the education of the children and their teachers and everyone else that's in the school. I think it's prudent and healthy that Jason, for example, raised the question about the upcoming holidays and how might we be preparing for that? So all of this is very important discussion. I don't think we can get into much detail about that now. I would, however, like us to look at, not to discuss now, but to look at the collective bargaining agreement with respect to the paraprofessionals and support staff. Having been on that negotiations team, I don't remember anything that said that a paraprofessional could step in for a teacher. There it may be there, but I'd really like to review that. And again, all of this is about trying to be as prepared as we possibly can in order to support the health and wellbeing and the education of our kids and their teachers and everybody else involved. Thank you. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Cheryl. I believe I had a response from Lynn Carey and then I would like to recognize Jack Breyer.
David, you also have Jen Burke has her hand up as well.
Oh.
And I was just pointing out that Cheryl had something to say, so.
Okay, all right, thank you. Uh, Jack, you would be willing to yield for Jen here for a few minutes? Jen, Burke here on.
Hi, thank you. I'm the school nurse at Central. So I just wanted to just back up a little bit of the conversation about the holidays. I think we're all focused on the staff, which is, I mean, I understand why. But I have to say that the staff overall have been very responsible with what traveling they've had to do. In my mind, it has been essential travel, whether it's been for, there's been a couple funerals, etc. So I don't see that it's been like leisure travel, at least what I've witnessed so far since the beginning of the year. I think the bigger picture, at least with the upcoming vacation and holidays, is our students. And where they may be going during the time that we have off or family that may be traveling into to our students' houses from red or yellow counties. So I think it's important just to think about collectively the bigger picture than just the staff at this point. Um, and we do actually, Mr. Pratt just may not have been aware from this week. I do have one staff member currently out that's been out since Sunday night. She contacted me with very much like probably typical cold symptoms, but she did have a fever and she has still been out. So it, for me, it seems like it's pretty much, you know, week to week that we're fortunate that we only have her out and we do have that one permanent sub at this point that Dr. Carey mentioned that has been able to cover that class. But as we are just entering into flu season, there's a lot of things, not not even COVID. Most of the stuff I'm seeing in the building is your typical colds and some strep throats, but it's starting. So it's just, I think we got to look at the bigger picture beyond just the staff. Thank you.
Thank you for pointing that out, Jen. It's very helpful for us and we realize that the nurses are doing an awful lot of work keeping your buildings safe and healthy. So thank you and thank all of your colleagues as well.
Thank you.
Jack Breyer?
Yes, just want to point out that our administration is somewhat constrained because we don't have policies about about these things. And without those policies, we really are constrained by both state guidelines and the CBA and really cannot act in a more restrictive capacity absent something from from our boards in the way of policy. We were going to be having a policy meeting shortly. This might be a time to state for the record and have us vote on policies about travel. Policies about what is expected of staff, what is expected of students, what is expected of of the members of our community. I don't think that's the one way that you can put some teeth in things, because otherwise it really falls within the discretion of the administration. And without any policy, you really don't have a lot. So I'm hoping that when we meet, this will be front and center on our list. Because we don't have, we haven't modified our CBA and we don't have a lot in the in our policy book about this, because nobody thought about it. And so this would be a good opportunity to fix that. And I think that's a point Cheryl's making and a point that some of us have made in this conversation and separately.
Chris, when will policy be meeting? I believe you're muted, Chris.
Sorry about that. It's at the end of the month, right before our regularly scheduled SU meeting at five, I believe.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Anything else before we move on to business office reorganization? Let's talk about what's new and interesting here, Chris and Ms. Pagan, Laura.
Thank you. I'm scared here. Everybody left. I'm alone. So um, from our previous list that I informed in the last meeting of all the things that we have pending, I just want to just let you guys know everything that has been done already. And we're definitely every day learning new things and adjusting. I feel really confident on the staff that I have right now. Our two newbies are amazing, knock on wood. Um, really fast learners. Our data entry accounting clerk person, an audit report that we thought it was going to take him three weeks. He just finished it already in one week, which is really good for us, you know, now it's just moving forward with the new year. So from the previously list, I'm currently working with one of the districts, you know, just to compare information and just be up to date with deadlines that might come that I'm not aware of or that the passed already. So um that's just a contact. So I commend her with stat reports was submitted already. We have, I'm sorry, reports was submitted already as well. Tax invoices were sent to the towns and we're getting payments already. Not all of them were happy. But I'm getting my checks. And direct calls got approved, which I was screaming. You know, the staff was really excited about it. I'm really happy that we got a lot of help from Bob from the state. And I'm glad that the Department of Education understands where we're standing and how hard we're trying to bring everything together in the office. And they gave us that opportunity. So we got approved in direct cause as FY20, but it's better than what we had that was nothing. So I am meeting now weekly with our auditors so that way we could complete FY20 and FY21 bank reconciliations, journal entries and cash receives. That way we go both be on the same page and have all accurate information in the system. Grants, bonds are entry and completed and EPI in it. Currently for payroll, we're working really together as a team. Payroll is being done every Wednesday by evening, so that way Thursday morning I post. I think the staff got spoiled a little bit. I had people calling us then Thursday morning, oh, where's my paycheck? Uh, we post in the morning, you get it by five, which actually our deadline is Friday. But you know, I know a lot of people count on their checks. So the staff has been really good on finishing that by Wednesday evenings. So Thursday morning is just rolling. It'll be better now that I have our newbies as well. They're going to be working in one on one. As well as being better because we have the process in place now that staff needs to submit their time sheets by 10 a.m. on a Monday. You know, before I will have a staff member, you know, contacting the office and making changes Thursday evening. Meanwhile, we have to post payroll on on Friday morning. So all of those adjustments have helped a lot, the staff as well. Warrants are being sent out and back backup documents are here in my office. Still haven't got no visit of you guys. But I have them here ready for you. Payroll warrants are going out as well, so I believe you guys did see them. I do have hard copies as well in my office. Warrants are here on Tuesday already after every Friday of payroll. Employee deduction audit for FY20, that's what's the project that Frank was completing for us is done. Now it's just a final review for that Joelle is going to do. just to be sure that all the information is accurate because at the end of the day, it's just his first week. So we just don't want to submit any information that is wrong. So it's like a double check, but the most important part and time consuming, he did it. We changed benefits from fiscal year to calendar year. That way we get accurate information as well. Right now, Joellen has a master spreadsheet with all the employees' information and categories. This is just to have things more organized. It helps with contracts, stipends, mail merge as well with the collecting bargain agreements. So that was a really good change as well that she implemented. I'm working already on budget with the principals. I have meetings with all of them for the first week of November so that way we could have done as well on time. And hopefully by mid-November, we should be done with that. We have updated accounts payable and reimbursement policies. We sent a refresh as well. We have a lot of people that were submitting, you know, for reimbursements for receipts of 90 days and over, which was affecting our budget because those are receipts as well that are from the past calendar year, not even current. So I did send out emails to let everybody know if they cannot submit their receipt in 60 days, they're not going to get reimbursed. It's their responsibility to submit things on time because it affects our budget. And honestly, after 60 days, they didn't submit the receipt. I guess they don't need their money, right? So FY21 grant budget was updated for lending for special ed. So all their information is in the system. And we do have now premium program that was extended through June 30th. And we updated all the information already and submitted our new application. So it's been a challenging couple of weeks, but we'll get there. It'll take time, but at least with the most extensive and ASAP tasks that we needed to complete and reports that we needed to submit to the state, those things have been done.
Thank you, Flora. I just want to observe that Colin James, high school director, has joined the meeting as well. Chris had his hand up and I'm going to just put one question out there and then you and Chris can wrestle over it. E-finance, we had a lot of trouble with that in fiscal year 20. Are you on top of that now?
So right now, that's what we're doing. That's why we had Frank working on the auditing project, you know, just to be sure that all the information for employees and deductions were correct in the system. E-finance is always challenging. Right now, I'm sitting in meetings with other districts that are new, even though we are not new to it. I am. So I contacted Leslie and I was like, can you just add me to those webinars just so I can be at the same page as anybody that is new because even though our district is not. You know, I have two new employees. I am new. You know, Joellen is fairly new. So it's a good refresh for those ones that have used it already and is a good starting point for me as well. I get to listen to other districts' concerns and challenges. So it keeps me up to date on what's going on.
Thank you, Flora. Back to Chris.
Yeah, I mean, I just want to take this time to, you know, Flora and her staff, you know, the two, you know, majority of them, all of them are new except for two of them up there. As you can see, they've been working very hard, working, you know, trying to get everything done. Everything on that list that we presented to you, that very concerning list that we presented to you at the last meeting, they were able to get completed and check everything off that list. I think the biggest thing was the grants that we weren't going to get and her and her team were able to get us those grants. So I think it's a good indication that we have the right people in the position to do this. They're keeping me informed every step of the way. And they're fixing the problems as they're uncovered and going back and fixing problems that we were unaware of. So I want to thank Flora and her team because the proof is in their work and they're definitely getting it done.
Flora, I have one more question for you. And that is, I understand it's considered to be a best practice in finance administration that you cross-train your team. I realize with so many new team members, you probably want to have them trained in their primary responsibilities first before you do cross-training. But what are your goals for cross-training, Flora?
So for example, I have, right now, Jason is doing payroll. The idea is that Frank is going to do everything with the time sheets, but Jason is the main payroll person, so I want him to know all the steps that it takes to complete payroll. So right now, he is just going from step one with Shawna. Even though later on Frank will be backup for him and do those time sheets, it is important for him to know every single step of it. For example, Frank right now, so he is helping Joellen with the audit. So the idea of having him starting to help with an audit is because I felt that if he's able to find an error later on, it'll help him to avoid that error that he found. So I thought that the business approach was him to start with an audit, see how the information was already in the system, find those errors. So later on, when it comes to the point that he has to put, like for example, a new employee's benefit in system, he knows what he should be doing to avoid any of the past errors that we have encountered. Once he has completed that training with Joellen, then he'll sit with Shawna and he'll start doing the payroll aspect that he'll be helping with as well as he'll be helping Marlene. So that way, if Marlene wants to go to Rome, she's able to because we all deserve vacations. So the idea is for them to learn a little bit from each of the desks. But I, you know, I have confidence in them because they're fast learners. But at the same time, I am trying to take it easy with them because the idea is like I told them, I don't want you to do something if you're not sure of it because for me, it is understandable that you asked me a million questions, not that you have errors. We have too many errors in the past, so that is not doable for us. So if you're not sure, you will always contact anybody here in the office and we'll try to figure it out. So I think it's a great team, great environment here. You've been here picking up the check. You've seen the change in the office. You know, we all speak together. We have now open floor. So it's better communication between all of them, you know, like I have always my door open and you could hear me speaking to them in my office. So we are working together as a team. That's the only way that we're going to be able to overcome all the things that I've been finding that have passed. But so this one is just moving forward.
Thank you, Flora. Chris, I do see there's a handout from Jen Burke. Is that an old hand or is that current?
Not sure. It came up afterwards. It might be a new hand.
I'm all set. Thank you. I don't have any new comments.
Okay, thank you. Chris, back to you.
Do have a question, David, if I may, if that's okay.
Yeah, let me just, let me just hear from Chris and we'll open it up for questions.
Thank you.
I think I'm all set, David. I think, you know, Flora said it all. It's just, you know, not only are they working together and getting things done, but you go up there, the whole environment has changed in regards to the physical space. It's much more welcoming. It's, you know, the level of professionalism that you see when you go up there. It's very impressive and I would encourage, you know, make an appointment and stop by and see them.
I have the warrants.
Okay, deal. I'm going to recognize my high school colleague, Colin James. Then I'm going to go to my other high school colleague, Priscilla Lambert. Go ahead, Colin.
Thanks, David, and thanks for having me participate in the meeting. Flora, my question to you is, the emails have been great. I've even noticed from the virtual standpoint, again, your emails, you're responding on time. You're just very, you're doing a great job. My question is, is I was on the village board here in Bellis Falls for six years. And I know on that board, we would get in our packet the orders, bills and warrants prior to the meeting. So like board members could review them like as a hard copy, you know, and then any two would sign off on them. And actually, that board at the time, everybody signed off on them. My question is, a lot of people don't get an opportunity to review them. And again, you've been sending the emails out to everybody, so I guess there's really no excuse. I guess all of us should be looking at them. My question is not to add to your workload, but maybe it's at an individual board level that, you know, those could be attached to the packets. I believe they are an email, but sometimes a hard copy is kind of nice. But again, maybe that's, I should be quiet and we'll bring it up at the high school because each board should maybe bring it up, but.
So we had that concern before and that's why I had sent an email out stating, you know, that the hard copy of the warrants are here in my office to avoid exposing all the employees. Whoever is interested in reviewing them to detail, they could just come in and they could just review them. Just let me know what time you're coming in, just to avoid have too many people maybe just walking in. But they're all here in folders. They're here every Tuesday on the table and we did and review them. The aspect of not having maybe a hard copy to scan it, we did try that approach, but the problem is that we will have to unstable every document. We want to avoid the confusion of anything getting lost as well putting it to the scanner. It gets stuck unless we're going to get another employee just to scan, which it wouldn't.
Absolutely. And I, sometimes they're hard to.
Always ready.
Okay, sometimes they're just hard to read like in a PDF file or whatnot. And again, I'm not, I'm not blaming you. It's just that, I think that's been the practice for, they're hard to read. So, but thank you. I appreciate everything you're doing, so.
They are here. You can make an appointment. You just get an email. I'll accommodate you if I'm not here. We have Marlene is here already at seven in the morning, you know. We have a special table for it. We have wipeies. We have hand sanitizer. We have comfortable chairs. So we're trying to work it around to make everybody a little bit more happy.
Awesome. Well, thank you. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Priscilla.
Yeah, I'm getting set up Dropbox for some reason on here. I don't know why. Let me get out of that. For some reason, I was not able to get into any of the updates or any of the documents and I've got to figure out why. It may be my computer and it may be my problem. But, and this partially might have been covered in there, but I know there was an issue over grants. And I was wondering if you can tell, update us on the grants, whether we are getting all of the ones that we should be getting or whether we actually are losing some.
No. So the issue that we had with the grants was the approval of the indirect cost. And indirect cost is an application that we need to submit in December. The state follow-up with different parties in the office that they were supposed to submit that application and the state actually follow-up all the way to February. And the approach that the state got back was like, we can't get to that right now. It's okay. When I found out that we weren't going to get approved the indirect cost, which it was what I submitted last time as information in our meeting, I did work 101. After 17 emails with the state, we did get approved that last portion that we were waiting, which is the indirect cost. The only thing is that usually indirect costs, since you submit an application every year, they give you a higher percentage. But I did compare our percentage that got approved, which is the same one that we got approved in prior year. And compared to what they approve other districts, we just lost 1% maybe or maybe 0.3. So it just depends on whatever we would have submitted, how much they would have approved. But, you know, some district got approved like 14.1 or 14.2. We still got 13.25, which is not bad. And honestly, it's better than what we were going to get, that it was nothing. We need to submit again for that application in December, which is like, what, a month and a half away? So we were really lucky that the state, you know, cut us a slack and gave us the opportunity of just giving us indirect cost. But it was just that portion. Everything else, Lynn was really good and he was really good submitting it. Honestly, that was the portion that the business office should have answered and they didn't. But we worked it around and we got it.
Okay, good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So we were actually basically on track then.
We are on track. Everything that has always been approved as grant wise for our district is in place. Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Chris, do you think we've covered the waterfront here on business office reorganization? We certainly heard quite a bit of how, about how it works.
Yeah, I'm happy with how it went as long as everyone else is.
Not hearing anyone unhappy. We are down to 5B, which interestingly enough is business manager finance reports. Flora, if there's more to say on finance reports or if there are questions, let's have the conversation, but otherwise we can keep moving, I think.
So we are sending automatic, the budget versus actual report. I did review that with one of the board members that called me. And it seems that the report is better than the other ones that we have used. It is self-explanatory. It shows you what we have budgeted and actual how we are spending. So all the information that is there is actually accurate. The information that we are adjusting as general enters is just balancing out whatever else we have in bank. But when it's coming to budget versus actual, we are up to date and everything is correct.
Thank you, Flora. Anyone else? Okay, item six, old businesses, the Lynn Law report on the business office. As noted on the agenda, that's going to be an executive session item. New business. Chris, is there any new business?
I don't have any new business, no.
Okay. Director's comments. Molly Bannack.
The only thing I have is I'd like to get the melding committee started and I just need somebody to refresh me on who is on that so that I can at least get us all together and get a plan on how we're going to at least look at some property.
Chris, you can handle that? Okay, I think, I think he's got you covered. Why don't you get with Chris and Nicole and find a date that's going to work for you and your committee, Molly? Anything else?
I would like to thank Flora and her staff. Nice night. Good job.
Great. Jason Benson, I believe I have you in the room still. Any questions, comment? This, I'll call it director's comment.
No questions, but again, I'd like to elaborate on Flora Pagan and her job with the business office. I think that sounds and certainly looks like it's coming together quite well. I appreciate her and her efforts that she's doing. And also, Chris, good job in keeping everybody going along pretty well here. And I think right now it's, we're in a critical time and everything is looking pretty good. Thank you.
Lynn Morgan.
If you reiterate what others have said, so much thank you to Chris and to Flora for getting all of this pulled together and feels like we're starting to move forward in a more smooth manner.
George Smith.
Yeah, I'm going to use my director's comment time for, I'd forgotten to mention this at Communication and Public Comment, but I saw somebody from our community who has a child with special needs, intensive special needs, and she relayed that she was very thankful for the four days a week in school. She luckily has a job where she was able to, last year, able to bring her to school, to work rather, but not others have that flexibility. So she just wanted to relay her feelings that it was, she was grateful for that. So just wanted to pass that along. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Brenda Farkas.
I just wanted to say it was refreshing to hear the business reports and she gives no meaning to hitting the ground running.
Thank you, Brenda. Colin James? Did I lose Colin? I may have. All right, Cheryl Charles.
I'd like to echo the thanks. You know, Chris, the newest reports we've gotten from you have been very, very helpful and detailed. So a special thanks for that. I'm sure that involves Lynn Carey and others on the staff as well. So thank you. Thank you all. And I'll echo everything that's being said about the business office. I had tremendous concerns and they are being addressed. I want to thank Flora for her patience with all of us, actually patience with everyone as she has been dealing with all the details and the. And they are being addressed, uh, I want to thank Flora for her patience with all of us, actually patience with everyone, as she has been dealing with all the details and the. Unwelcome surprises here and there, you're, uh, I'm very pleased at how quickly you have pulled together a team, a comprehensive team. And uh we we are making progress, so thank you um very much for all of that, and I want to add another thank you, again, I'm thinking locally. And this i- is not easy for everyone, and back to what Jen Burke said uh earlier, um, the the teachers, the staff, the personnel. Are the principals are all working so hard and it's going well, I mean, I'm I'm just hearing so many positive things. And we can't take that for granted, it takes enormous effort and integrity, we all need to keep listening and doing the best we can. Uh, and it's just a a time of kind of careful um um and watchful behavior on all of our parts, but at the same time. Real gratitude for the integrity with which people are handling all of this, thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl, uh Priscilla Lambert.
Uh, yes, um, once again, I think our teachers are really, really doing as much as they possibly can with the. Restrictions that they're being placed of only two days a week, so I know a lot of them want to get that education to their children and. Educating children takes more than two days a week, so I am pleased to see that we are at least trying to move forward some. I would encourage continuing to look at options for different spacing, whether we have to get buildings, I know the middle school. Um, principal was saying, well, we don't want to put it on the Well Street playground because that uses our playground, but we could also put put some up. Um, at the where the high school is, they have plenty of land and be able to put maybe even our eighth graders in buildings up there, so that's an option to be looking at as well. There are other options I'm sure that people can come up with so as to get those children in school, because that that is our. Responsibility as a board is to educate our children, and if we're not getting them in school and not being able to keep them there, then. We are not fulfilling our responsibility. So keep plugging away at it, guys, and just keep doing the best you can, thanks.
Thank you, Priscilla, um, Jack Brier.
Uh, nothing for me tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Jack, uh Jason Terry.
Good, David, thank you.
Okay, uh Jessa West Clark.
Um, yes, actually, somebody um here in town texted me during the meeting to say that Flora is killing it and she was a good hire. Not to pile on the praise of Flora Pagan, but she is doing wonderful and. I don't hand out praise um as freely as other people, but it has been from a business office perspective, even though we're in the middle of a pandemic, this has been a better year than last. Um, and that says a lot. And then I think things are going well, our reports we're getting are good, um. And the only thing I can say to Priscilla's um drive for in-person instruction is that educating children does require innovation at times. Um, and I think our staff is actually doing pretty well with that, um, there's other ways to educate kids and they're they're working on getting that down pretty good, so thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jessa, um, date of uh next meeting, Chris, that'll be the twenty-eighth, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, and there will be policy proceeding and we'll notice policy committee members and other board members as well, I presume. We uh have uh item six A, which is the Lynn Law report, so um Chris or Lynn, whoever um is our administrator tonight, if you can. Uh, thin out the crowd and get the uh board members in the room, uh plus administration. Let's see if we can close up here by eight o'clock.
Uh, I'm gonna leave for the night because I'm alone in the office tonight, I'm sorry.
I I would say it's okay for Flora for you to head out.
Okay, thank you, have a good night.
Thank you, Flora, great job.
Thank you. Thank you.